Welcome. This is a hearing of the Committee on Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs for the State House. Welcome. My name is David Tarnas. I'm the Chair, along with my Vice Chair Greg Takayama. We welcome all of you here giving testimony. You help us do a better job, so I appreciate you being here to provide your testimony. And this is Tuesday, January 30th, 2:00 PM. We're in Conference Room 325, and we're also doing this hearing by video conference as well. Welcome to Committee members. Kanani Souza, thanks for being here. As always, right with us at the beginning of the hearing. That's wonderful. And I want to welcome our two new members to our committee. We've got Representative Luke Ebslin and Representative Tyson Miyake. So thank you both for being here, and it's a pleasure to have you on the committee. The other members of the committee will be here eventually. Of course, we won't have Troy Hashimoto here. He's moved on to the other side of the building. But we'll continue to work with him in his new role over there. And Representative Mizuno is up on the fifth floor, and we'll continue to work with him up there. So again, welcome. And for those who are testifying today, we'd like to make sure that everyone has a chance to testify, and so we're going to ask you to try to keep to two minutes. I'll ask you to wrap up. And if you're testifying by video, please keep yourself muted and your video off while you're waiting to testify, and then after your testimony is complete. The Zoom chat function, for those on video, will allow you to chat with the technical staff. Thank you for doing all your good job on our technical staff. So the chat function can talk to the technical staff only. I won't see it, so please don't send me any messages. If you're disconnected unexpectedly, don't panic. Just try to rejoin, and I'll try to fit you in after you come back. In case power goes out here and network fails and everything, and we have to stop the meeting, we'll reschedule and we'll put out proper notification. On video, if you're using any images for background, please make sure it's not trademarked or copyrighted, because that kicks us off of YouTube, which causes us trouble. So just use your own images there. And of course, please conduct yourself with aloha, no profanity or uncivil behavior. Remember, it's okay to disagree, but let's not be disagreeable. We're in this together, to try to do what's best for the people of the state of Hawaii. Today's hearing is for the purposes of considering numerous measures. And first up, we have House Bill 1593 relating to elections. This requires the Office of Elections to print and mail a physical copy of the Digital Voter Information Guide to any voter upon request, and it appropriates funds. First up, we have Scott Nago from the Office of Elections. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in support of House Bill 1593. We believe an informed electorate is important for the health of our democracy. We'd just like to note that we don't have anything to compare this to, so we don't have, we don't, our prices are based on a 5% of the registered voter cost, but we'll be in a better position after the next election to be able to tighten up those numbers, because we really don't have anything to compare it to. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have Jamie Detwiler with the Hawaii Federation of Republican Women with comments. We have Jacob Wenkik with the Hawaii Young Republicans in support. Holly Plackett, League of Women Voters of Hawaii, in support. Benton Lee, an individual in opposition, and Corinne Solomon, individual in support. That's all the testimony I've received. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify on this measure? If not, questions, members? Just a quick question, if no one else has any, Mr. Nago. So your testimony is, your best estimate at this point is that if 5% of the total registered voters of 861,358 request a copy, that you would estimate it would be about $552,000?
Correct. And that includes the postage as well as the printing?
Yep, postage and printing. Yep. Okay. Okay, well, that's great that you've given us the best estimate, and we can use that. And that would be for this next election coming up, for both the primary and the general.
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, great. Any other questions, any members? If not, we'll move on. Thank you very much, sir. Next is House Bill 1879, again, relating to the Digital Voter Information Guide. This measure provides that certain information to be included in any digital voter information guide shall not be released to any requester in whole or in part before the public release of the entire guide. First up, we have Mr. Scott Nago, Office of Elections. Please proceed.
Thank you, the Office of Elections. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in support of this bill. This is our bill. The reason for this bill is we've been getting a lot of FOIA requests, and we want to make it clear that this is not something that somebody can put in a request for to get that information. We want to make sure that it gets released all at the same time, so it's equitable, and no opponent or an opponent of a candidate can't really get that information and tailor their statement towards something that their opponent wrote. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Holly Plackett, League of Women Voters of Hawaii, in support. We have Gerard Silva in opposition, and Corinne Solomon in support. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify on House Bill 1879? If not, questions, members? Vice Chair Takayama, please proceed.
For Scott, real quickly, the statement you're referring to is a 150-word statement from each candidate as to why he or she is running for office. Is that right?
So, yes, correct. So it's a statement that the candidate writes not to exceed 150 words.
So what would be the motivation for someone to request this? I assume this is not something controversial or secretive. What would be the motivation?
I mean, we just want to make sure that we've, our office has seen a lot of FOIA requests, an increase in FOIA requests. We just want to make-
Could you just define what FOIA is?
Freedom of Information Act.
Freedom of Information Act. Thank you.
So anything we produce can be requested under that Freedom of Information Act, and we just want to make sure that this isn't inadvertently released prior to it being released to the voters all at the same time.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other questions? I have a follow-up question. So it seems like, since that is the focus of your proposed measure, that we do need to include statutory language with UIPA. It's Uniform Information Practices Act. Is that, it seems like that would be important to have that in the statute. Any comment?
I'm going to have to defer that one to, I mean, off the top of my head, yes. We just want to make sure that the information, when it's released, is not something that somebody can get prior to it actually being released to the public. So whether it's UIPA or FOIA, as long as it's not released to the public under something like that.
Well, we have two options. We could either move it out with the UIPA chapter referenced, or I could defer it till next week, and you could get back to me and tell me what you think is best.
Why don't we defer next week, and I'll get back to you to tell you what's best?
Yeah, give me, because I just want to make sure, because this is a single referral.
Okay.
After we're finished with it, I want it to be clean and really address everything. And I just want to make sure that if we have to include language in there, it's in there.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Chair.
All right. So we'll deal with this in decision-making, but I appreciate your input. Thank you. Any other questions? If not, we'll move on. Thank you. House Bill 1605 relating to elections. This requires that each vote cast for a question on a ballot for the ratification of a constitutional amendment be counted in the negative only if the ballot properly indicates that the vote is in the negative. Understood that? Okay. We're, yeah. So this, and in the testimony, we might learn more about this. First up, we have Reese Nakamura, Deputy Attorney General. Reese, pleasure to see you, sir. You can tell us what this means.
Good afternoon, Chair Tarnas and members of the committee. We previously submitted comments to this bill, and of course, I'll be happy to answer your questions. But primarily, our motivation was to ensure that, in the case of a constitutional convention or a constitutional amendment, those are somewhat special types of elections. And I think, as we explained in our written testimony, it has somewhat of a higher standard. Not only must you win by, or get approval through yes votes, those yes votes have to also be more than 50% of the total votes that were cast. So there's really a two-part test, and the genesis of that is in the Supreme Court case of AFL-CIO versus Yoshina, which clarified the Constitution, Article 17, which requires that two-part test. That, so, that's what we're trying to explain in our comments. But I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Well, I appreciate that. Your testimony is comprehensive, and it also sort of points out that the language in the bill is not as accurate as it needs to be.
Correct. Yeah, correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have testimony in opposition from Andrew Crossland, Michael Moylan, Katia Ullani Bowers, Noella Van Wygant, April Handog, Kelly Morgan, Tatiana Mau-Mausolo, Sharon Vandusen, Lealani Mahuka Iwaki, Kamakani Dedelei, Mallory Dedelei, Jay Chun, Lisha Mathes, Louise Ma, Ryan Willis, Canoe Willis, Thomas Kent, Sierra Palpatoc, Chester Lum, Teresa Parmenter, Terry Savai Naia, and Terry Yoshinaga, all in opposition. We have testimony in support from Olika Valdez. And testimony in opposition from other individuals, Tanya Victorine, Rita Wong, Heather Laurel, Tiffany Salazar, James Kabudal, Robin Gusich Batara, Vivek Patela, Lynn Bautista, Jessica Penner LM, Amanda Scardilli, Julie Schaus, Greg Schaus, Sam Schaus, Alice Abelenada Lenida, Kathy Jenkins, Thomas Stanton, Anne Kamau, Jessica Chiazlo, Laura Kushner, Mark Au, Corinne Solomon, Terry Murakami, Chloe S., Vic Penn, Scott Sheddco provided comments, and then testimony in opposition from Kim Corderi, Lucretia Amaral, Melvin Amaral, Ivan Alvarado, and testimony in support from Scott Kidd. That's all the testimony we've received. Anyone else here wishing to testify? If not, questions, members? Any questions, either side?
May I, sir?
Yes. Are you, would you like to testify on HB 1605?
Yes, sir. I did submit testimony. This is Jamie Detwiler, Hawaii Federation of Republican Women, and I did not hear my name called.
Please proceed.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for this opportunity to testify, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Takayama, and honorable committee members. So while I am and the Federation is in opposition of HB 1605, I agree with the intent of the bill. However, I do have comments with related, with relation to the verbiage in Section 2. So I agree with Section 1. In Section 2, I recommend that they remove the issue of ranked choice voting. That can be addressed in the ranked choice voting legislation. That's just our recommendation. Again, the Federation would consider supporting this bill in a future reading or hearing of this bill if that verbiage is corrected. Otherwise, thank you for the opportunity to testify. I yield.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. If you could help us out and submit your testimony once again, because it didn't show up on our list, but it always is good to have it in writing. So if you would, Ms. Detwiler, that'd be great. Anyone else-
Thank you, sir. I will.
Sir, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on HB 1605? If not, questions, members? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you. Next is House Bill 1606 relating to arrangement of candidate names on ballots. This bill requires that any new contract entered into by the Office of Elections for equipment or services relating to preparing ballots or counting votes include the capability to randomize the names of candidates appearing on the ballot if technologically possible. Requires candidate names to be randomized on ballots to the greatest extent possible. Requires the Office of Elections to inform voters and candidates by a method suited for the voting system that the names of candidates may not be in alphabetical order. First up, we have testimony from Scott Nago, Office of Elections. Please proceed.
Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments. We just want to note that our voting system can currently do this. However, we can only randomize the names to the precinct level and not within the precinct. Or basically, when you program the system, it's like Battleship, you have an X and Y coordinate, and we can't change that within the precincts. Otherwise, the ballots won't read. But other than that, we can, we can accomplish this with the current system we have. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have testimony in opposition from Jamie Detwiler, Hawaii Federation of Republican Women. Please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Vice Chair and committee members. I stand in opposition of HB 1606 for the following reasons. I read through the bill, and they cited research that was done showing that it would be, you know, beneficial for everybody. It would provide fairness and equality for all of the candidates. I also, in my testimony, I stand on that written testimony, I did research, and according to the MIT Election Data Science Lab, they had research that was really interesting. So they found that, yes, you know, it really doesn't matter, basically, whether it's in alphabetical order or incumbent first. And, you know, some scholars also found that it's really people's, their personal views. I mean, of course, everybody votes for their values, right? So it shouldn't matter whether we're listed in alphabetical order or not. And I can tell you from personal experience, being on the ballot in 2022, I was listed first in alphabetical order, and my opponent was listed second underneath me, and he's the incumbent, and he did win the race. So it didn't really matter in the end. So I really think it's a waste of resources to have this bill. It's more legislation. It's really unnecessary. And, you know, if we need to upgrade the software, that's going to cost the taxpayers money. And so I oppose it for the waste of resources. Thank you for this opportunity to testify. I yield.
Thank you very much. And next, we have testimony from numerous individuals in opposition and comments. And out of deference to everyone here who's waiting, I'm not going to read all the names, but we have, we're posting them all, so that these are available on the website. And I, just assuring everyone that I've transmitted this to all the members, so they've been able to read the testimony. So everyone who submitted the testimony, we are paying attention to you, but I'm just trying to be efficient, so I'm not going to read all the names. And everyone who submitted testimonies, individuals were in opposition except for one with comments. Is there anyone else here or online who wish to testify on HB 1606? Please, sir. You could introduce yourself and proceed.
Chair, my name is Adrian Lam. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I did provide comments. I just want to highlight that I understand the concept. It's like bingo cards. You want to make sure it's randomized, and so it's not an automatic filling of the ballot for some people. But my problem is with the technology. I already brought up some concerns about technology in our election systems, and it really doesn't matter. Once you have the template, the algorithms can also adjust to that template. And so, as I suggested in my comments, the best place, best way to do this is to have in-person precinct voting, hand-counted ballots. You have people that can look at the ballot and tell you what it is, and with a room full of people, they can validate it. And the example is 42 million ballots counted within six hours in Taiwan, only a month ago. We have 500,000 ballots that we're counting here. I think there's something to be learned from that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lam. And just, no, we, just to confirm everyone, we do have your testimony. So thank you for being here and providing your oral testimony as well. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? No? Questions, members?
I have a question.
Representative Suzo.
For Scott. I just wanted to know if you could further elaborate. I know in Republican circles, there's a lot of people seem to be opposed to this particular bill because the rationale, I think, is that you're increasing the complexity because of the technology and and having the ability to do the randomization, which in turn will make it harder to hold the Office of Elections accountable when it comes to rechecking votes or whatever the process entails after the fact or whatever appeals process or whatnot. So can you just kind of explain as to does this affect anything else aside from just randomizing the names?
As far as auditing the election or making sure that the results are what the results are, no, because we do a manual audit where we actually have to look at the ballot whether with it's not automated, it's not machines. We're actually looking at it with human eyes that have to read the name to make sure that that vote is for that that candidate. I guess what I'm seeing where it will get confusing is if you make us randomize it so much that it changes within a precinct, there's it's really hard to to know that that X and Y coordinate for that candidate is for that candidate written down on the ballot.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Any other questions, members? If not, thank you very much. Next, we're going to consider HB 1609 relating to elections. This requires the Office of Elections to file an application with Electronic Registration Information Center, Inc., or ERIC, by January 1, 2025, for the state to be admitted as a member of the organization. It requires the Office of Elections to share with each county the information and services made available by ERIC pursuant to the state's membership agreement with the organization, and requires the Office of Elections and each county office that administers elections to use information and services made available by ERIC to verify their respective voter registration rolls and makes an appropriation. First up, we have testimony from Scott Nago, Office of Elections. Please proceed.
Thank you. The office provides comments. We would like to note that the initial cost for the first year would be $25,000 to join ERIC plus $100,000 to conduct an initial mailing to all driver's licenses and state ID holders that are not registered. We would also like to ask that this bill that we be allowed to join by June 30, 2025 as opposed to January 1. This would address any administrative issues related to any submittal of the required application. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony with comments from the Office of the County Clerk, County of Kauai. Next, we have testimony in opposition from Jamie Detwiler, President Hawaii Federation of Republican Women. Please proceed.
Thank you, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Takayama, and Committee members. Thank you for this opportunity to testify in opposition of HB 1609. So I have three points to make with regards to ERIC. But before I do, I want to remind everybody that ERIC is an incorporated, private, nonprofit, nonpartisan organization. So if if we put them into our mix, they're going to be a third party. They're going to have access to private information, so such as name, birth date, last four social security number. This comes straight from the ERIC website. I went onto their website to do my due diligence in researching the background and looking for ways to to see how we can work with ERIC. It's important to note that in the past few months, or I would say, six months to a year, seven, I think it's now up to nine states have pulled out of ERIC. And I think it's also important to note that, as Mr. Nago stated, there is a membership fee. So that falls on the taxpayers, right? The burden of funding this always falls back to the taxpayers. So per the ERIC website, it is funded by your state government, and those that they call members are member states. It also does not really prevent illegal voting, as they promote on their website. I couldn't find any actual documented, you know, work that ERIC had done to prevent illegal voting. I have, however, found that there have been instances on the states who pulled out bloating of voter rolls. So, you know, Mr. Nago stated several years ago that our voter rolls in Hawaii are already bloated. You know, at the time he made that statement, it was by 100,000 people. Also, according to the city clerk of Honolulu, individuals who vote and sign, you know, sign up to register to vote, it's just a self-attestation.
Thank you. Could you wrap? If you could wrap up your testimony, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was my opportunity to testify. I yield.
Thank you very much. We have testimony in writing from numerous individuals in opposition and in support. And it looks like we have someone on Zoom or intending to be on Zoom, Mary Healy. Is Mary Healy online? Please proceed, Ms. Healy.
Hi. Thank you for hearing my testimony regarding this subject. Registering with ERIC is wrong for Hawaii. 125,000 for entry and 23,000 annually is another burden to the taxpayers when a national when the National Voter Registration Act already covers what this corporation does. Why would we, as a state, want to share information with participating states when there are only 22 states now and eight states who have withdrawn? Virginia's Commissioner of Elections, Suzanne Beal's reason for rethinking her state's membership was the recent exit of nearby states and, quote, "increasing concerns regarding stewardship, maintenance, privacy, and confidential voter information." Also, controversy surrounding the historical sharing of data with outside organizations leveraged for political purposes. ERIC's original funding was from an anonymous donor and the Pew Center on the States, who received funding from the Transparency and Integrity Fund of George Soros Open Society. Myself and others who oppose this bill do not want our voter information shared with this corporation. Just today, an article was released from Public David Agib detailing a new months-long investigation revealing that the FBI, George Soros, and Brazil's government have been secretly working together to oversee a mass censorship effort that is in direct violation of the US and Brazilian constitutions. Vote no to register with ERIC. It's a mistake for our state, and I greatly appreciate you all listening to my testimony, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Testimony in support from Jacob Weincheck, Hawaii Young Republicans, and testimony in opposition from numerous individuals. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify? Please come on up, sir. Adrian Lam.
Thank you, sir, for the opportunity to testify again. I did write in opposition to this. I think ERIC has a lot of problems that we've seen in other states of not cleaning up voter rolls, in fact, bloating voter rolls. I think for our state ourselves, we, the Office of Elections, I also acknowledge that we have a bloated voter rolls problem, as much as 100,000. And I've done that myself through canvassing, where I've just a small sample, between 10 and 20% are registrations that are not current, are not at that address. But we have a great registration system. I think we can keep that, and I thank the Office of Elections for staying out of ERIC so far. If we can handle ourselves, I think it'd be even better than passing over to someone who's going to share information with other states, and we don't know where that data is going. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Lam. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure, 1609? If not, questions, members? Any questions? Mr. Nago, if I may ask a question? I was at a recent workshop with a bipartisan elections group, national group, where we had both Republican and Democrat administration officials, all election officials. And both Republican and Democrat election officials were saying very positive things about ERIC as a way to make sure that people aren't registered in two different states. And so could you speak briefly to why you think this is a good idea?
So when you register to vote and you fill out a voter registration application, one of the things you can do is if one of the questions asked of you is if you were registered to vote in a different state. Now, if you were registered to vote in a different state, what we would do is we would alert that state. When we register you in Hawaii, we would alert that state in that you are no longer should be registered in that state. What ERIC does, and that's all via self-subscribing affidavit, so it's up to the voter to be honest about that or put that down. What ERIC does is it shares information between states. So if somebody is registered in a different state and they show up as registered in your state, ERIC will flag that so we can follow on that to make sure that that voter is not registered in two states.
Okay. And I also heard, you know, what was mentioned in some of the testimony about people who are very skeptical about ERIC, that they share information inappropriately. When I asked the election officials from these other states, both Republican and Democrat, they said that was not their experience at all, and that they did their due diligence, and it was a well-run organization with strong confidentiality. In your due diligence, what have you found about ERIC?
I mean, like anything, integrity is the utmost importance. I don't think this ERIC would be in business if they weren't secure with their data. And you're talking nationwide. I don't I think if they were loose with their data and there were breaches and things like that, and they didn't have integrity, I don't think you would have this many states joining.
Okay. Yeah. When I was in Texas, for example, they thought it was very helpful.
I mean, it's just one tool for us to use to make sure that the voter registration rolls are clean.
Okay. Any other questions, members? No? Okay. Thank you. We'll move on. Next, we have House Bill 1976 relating to the Office of Elections. This appropriates funds to the Office of Elections statewide Elections Accessibility Needs Advisory Committee to provide voter education and outreach services for individuals with accessibility needs. House Bill 1976, we have first up testimony from Dentry Bartoldis or her representative. Pleasure to see you, sir.
Hello, Chair. Committee members, my name is Chase Silver. I'm here for Dentry Bartoldis with the Hawaii State Council on Developmental Disabilities. We just want to quickly summarize our testimony and support for this measure. We appreciate that the advisory committee was created. We understand that they do need some funds to do their jobs. And what we wanted to highlight is that there is a Americans with Disability Act requirement for states that voters with disabilities have equal access. And that's what this advisory committee helps us do. As for how much funds they need, we're going to defer to that committee specifically for that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have testimony in support from Lou Erdichek, Hawaii Disability Rights Center. Testimony in support from Holly Plackett, League of Women Voters of Hawaii. Testimony in support from James Gashell. Are you online? James Gashell, please proceed.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Tarnas and Vice Chair Takayama. James Gashell, here, I am vice chair of the statewide Voters with Accessibility Needs Advisory Committee, which is mouthful for the name of our committee. But basically, we were created two years ago, and we're appointed by the governor and confirmed by the Senate. And our objective is to make a good pathway for voters with accessible needs to be able to register and cast ballots and generally participate in the electoral process. This requires a certain amount of outreach throughout our state, and particularly the neighbor islands, to understand the needs and then to consider those and pass that information through to the Office of Elections, all toward meeting the goal of greater voter participation by individuals with accessibility needs. We estimate a cost of $10,000. This is particularly needed for this year during the time of election. We do, of course, receive administrative support from the Office of Elections, and we work with their staff constantly. So thank you very much for considering this, and I hope we can underwrite the cost of this committee for this voting season. Well, hello.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony in support from Katie Keim. Is Katie online? Please proceed. Nope? Okay. Next, we have testimony in support from Corinne Solomon and testimony in support from Patricia Morrissey. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on HB 1976? If not, questions, members? Nope. Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you. House Bill 1678 relating to elections. This designates all University of Hawaii system campuses as voter registration agencies, as defined in the National Voter Registration Act. Requires chief election officer to use data concerning voter registration and election participation to study voter registration, absentee voting, and provisional voting trends by age, race, and class to improve youth voter registration and election participation. Allows student ID cards issued by UH to be used to register to vote and designates all UH campuses as voter service centers. First up, we have testimony from... I guess you didn't submit testimony, did you? Okay. So I was looking for you. First up, we have testimony from Jade Fountain Tanigawa, Office of County Clerk, County of Kauai. Next, we have testimony from Deborah Halbert, University of Hawaii. Welcome. The floor is yours. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Deborah Halbert, Vice President for Academic Strategy. We offer comments on this bill. We, of course, support efforts to register voters, especially college students. The three areas that we had comments on was the first, the voter service agency. We have a link in our testimony to the spaces on our campuses, as well as where we already provide voter registration materials for students. So we're not sure if there's any additional need at this time to meet the requirements of the federal law. The second piece of our testimony, I think that's relevant for us, is the voter service center component. We would, of course, support the county clerk's assessment that these voter service centers would create fiscal and logistical challenges for the offices of elections, and so we would defer to their opinion on how to do this. Of course, for each of the counties, they would need to have countywide access, so it's not entirely clear how we would provide facilities on our campuses. So that's something to consider. The third, of course, is for the purposes of student identification for voting. We are not providing any opinion one way or another on whether that should be there, but would just like to note that our student IDs do not include signatures or any term of when they are officially students, just for your information. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony in support from Jacob Weincheck, Hawaii Young Republicans. Testimony in opposition from Jamie Detwiler, Hawaii Federation of Republican Women. Ms. Detwiler, would you like to give testimony online?
Thank you, sir. Thank just a couple of things. I'm concerned, again, about the ID process. And also, part of the bill talks about, sorry, I just had my my testimony up here, talks about doing studies. I'm not sure, you know, with regards to studying voters by age, race, and class are pertinent to, you know, election participation. As the previous testifier said, you know, they've already had, you know, voter registration on campuses as part of, you know, their requirement to provide that opportunity for students. But, you know, I have my reservations of doing any type of studies on the, you know, background of students. The other thing that concerns me goes back to potential noncitizen voters. So if they're just using their UH ID as a form of ID to register to vote, it doesn't necessarily say whether they're a US citizen or not. Again, that goes back to self-attestation. So I have concerns about that. And the last point is a waste of resources. You know, conducting studies costs money. Anything new added to the current law in provision for students to register to vote is going to be a burden on the taxpayers. That money should be better spent on improving the election process, the systems, you know, ballots, tenant custody, all of that. So for those reasons, I ask you to vote no on this bill. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I yield.
Thank you very much. Next, we have numerous testifiers who submitted testimony in opposition as individuals. Some in support, Scott Kidd in support, Michael Older, Alika Valdez, and a majority in opposition, and Cardenas Pintor in support, but numerous testifiers in opposition, very skeptical about ERIC. Mary Healy? Mary Healy, if you're available, please proceed for testimony via Zoom.
Hello, and thank you again for listening to my testimony. As the previous testifiers have stated, UH already has a registration process, and I believe this is a waste of funds. I believe the school needs to, the school system itself needs to focus on academics and also conducting studies on students and their information, I think is wrong. I think that overall, the bill is just very loosely worded and it does nothing as far as like adding to our current system. I believe it will take away and is a misappropriation of funds. And I just hope that all of you would vote no on this particular bill. And thank you for your time for listening to me.
Sure, thank you. And I misspoke. These are folks who are skeptical about this bill, which relates to University of Hawaii as their campuses as voter registration agencies. I was just dwelling on Eric, I guess. Next, we have Mr. Adrian Lamb. Thanks for being here. Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you. It's always nice to drive with a poly to come over here.
All right, hon.
Yeah, I did write in opposition to this and not because of University of Hawaii students. I'm all in favor of, you know, getting young people involved and involve elections, learning about the elections process, registering to vote. The problem is with the UH, with the ID. The ID does not confer citizenship. It's not a form of, a proper form of dedication for registering to vote. But also, as others have testified, this voter service center, I mean, I think it'd be great if they had them over there, but as a voter, I'd love to have more in my community, in my district. We have Hawaii Paradise Park, who has no access to mail, or they don't have regular postal service, and they have to drive halfway around the island to vote if they want to vote in person. I think it's better suited that we spend more resources on more precinct voting or at least district voting on Election Day. And we have a great online voter registration system already. I'm sure students know how to go on the website to register, and I tell many people to use that system, too. It works well. I think it's worth keeping. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to testify on HB 1678? If not, questions, members? No questions? Take that as a good compliment to you for your online registration. If there's no questions on 1678, we'll move on. House Bill 1766 relating to elections prohibits the distribution of electioneering communications before an election that a person knows or should have known are deceptive and fraudulent deep fakes of a candidate or party. First up, we have Mr. Gary Kam, Campaign Spending Commission. Mr. Kam, welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair Tarnas, Chair, Vice Chair Takayama. My name is Gary Kam, and I'm with the Campaign Spending Commission. We submitted comments to this bill. The first one, because of conflicting provisions with the electioneering communications statute, the commission suggests that we, the reference be to an advertisement as opposed to electioneering communication. There's a slight difference, so, because the electioneering communication only applies to directly naming a candidate, whereas advertisement applies to both candidates and ballot issues. But I don't know if you, I guess you could have deep fakes on ballot issues, too. And the second comment that we, that commission has is that the prohibition on this synthetic media message, the commission believes that parties should be removed from the prohibition because the parties, a party shouldn't be depicted in an ad or electioneering communication by the very definition. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. Next, we have testimony and support from Marisha Palma Elmore. Welcome. Please proceed.
Hi, my name is Marisha Palma Elmore. I'm the Executive Director of the Screen Actors Guild and American Federation of Television and Radio Artists. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify and support of this measure. So some may ask, hey, it's elections, what do the actors have to do anything with elections? But for the Screen Actors Guild, the protection of one's likeness and image and voice is paramount. It's probably one of the most important things we do. So this is why we're testifying and why it's important. And I'm going to stand on my testimony and support. I did just want to bring up, of course, the protection of likeness and image as being really important. And to thank this group for doing what they can to hinder misinformation in this state when it comes to elections. So if I, if y'all have any other questions with regards to deep fakes or AI, this is, of course, something we can speak to, but I'll stand on my testimony for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you could stick around in case we have questions, that'd be great. Thanks very much. We have testimony from Melissa Patac with the Motion Picture Association, online. Please proceed.
Yes, thank you. Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Takayama, members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Melissa Patac, Vice President for State Government Affairs for Western States for the Motion Picture Association. MPA's members are the leading producers and distributors of filmed entertainment across all platforms, including motion picture theaters, cable, satellite broadcast, and internet exhibition. MPA's members include the Walt Disney Studio Motion Pictures, Netflix Studios, Paramount Pictures, Sony Pictures Entertainment, Universal City Studios, and Warner Brothers. Some of our members have news operations and/or local broadcast stations, and that's our interest in this bill. MPA supports the intent of the bill to ensure the integrity of the election process and to protect voters from misinformation. We have just a few amendments to suggest that we believe will improve the bill, and we do appreciate that HB 1766 is modeled on California's election deep fakes law, which has been in law since 2021. We recommend first the references to and definition of artificial intelligence be deleted. It shouldn't matter whether the deep fake was created by AI or edited on a smartphone. Voters should know of any manipulation by any means of a candidate's image or voice to make it appear that they did or said something that they did not. Specifically, including artificial intelligence, doesn't really strengthen the bill and may create more confusion. We also suggest that in the exemption section concerning a broadcaster paid to publish the material that is a deep fake, the requirement that the broadcaster make a good faith effort to establish that the synthetic media is not a deep fake be deleted. Under FCC rules, a broadcaster is required to broadcast any advertisements as received. This section, as written, likely conflicts with the broadcaster's legal obligations as set forth by the FCC. There's a couple of other smaller amendments that we included with our testimony, and I'll stand on the testimony and thank you for considerate, your consideration, and I'm happy to try and answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have numerous testifiers who are sent in written testimony. Jacob Weincheck, Hawaii Young Republicans in support. Randy Pereira, Hawaii Government Employee Association in support. And numerous in opposition, forty-nine comments, forty-nine testifiers in opposition. Jamie Detweiler, Hawaii Federation of Republican Women submitted comments. Ms. Detweiler, would you like to provide comments?
Sir, thank you for the opportunity. I stand on my comments as submitted. I support the intent of this bill, and with a couple of amendments that are included in my comments, I yield back my time to you, sir. Thank you.
Thanks very much. In addition to those who are testifying, who testified, written testimony in opposition, we have also fifteen who testified in support in writing. And, oh, we have Tui Anna Scanlon testifying in support in person. Welcome. Please proceed.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Tui Anna Scanlon, President of IATSC Local 665. I stand on written testimony in support and would like to add that much like there are common sense protections against election fraud, like in Hawaii revised statutes, Section 19-3 and 3.5, if you can't cast a fraudulent ballot, should not, also not be able to campaign on the fraudulent image of an opponent. Thank you so much.
For those of us who don't know your organization, could you explain what the acronym stands for?
Yes. We are the International Alliance of Theatrical Stage Employees, work behind the scenes on entertainment projects, and the reason why we take, you know, notice of this and are, you know, concerned and care about this issue is because our members vote.
Absolutely, yeah. Thank you very much. Very cool. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Questions?
Yes, I'd like to.
Oh, yes, please, go ahead. Introduce yourself, please.
Thank you, and I'm sorry that my testimony, I think I didn't submit it correctly. So my name is Jonah Minkoff-Zern, public citizen, speaking on behalf of Public Citizen, Campaign Co-Director of Public Citizens Democracy Campaign. We are in support of this measure. We're grateful to be working with the sponsor here and sponsors around the country. There are thirty-three bills either moving or passed in the same regard around the country right now, and another ten that we're working to introduce. We see this as an essential democracy issue right now. As we've seen, there is growing risk of the technology of deep fakes, of creating false images or false audio or a false video, and that being used in elections. There were significant examples in Argentina and Slovakia recently where deep fakes right before the elections may have had a serious influence on the outcome. Many people saw last week in the New Hampshire primary where a deep fake was created pretending to be President Biden telling voters not to go vote in the election. The issue is increasingly significant, increasingly of concern because of the ease of creating artificial intelligence deep fakes or other deep fakes, as another speaker referenced. And there's increased ability to create it in a way where it's not easy to detect. So we're grateful for the legislation moving here. We see this issue as absolutely essential. We're also really grateful to see the significant bipartisan support on this issue and moving forward legislation around the country in a way that's very uplifting and hopeful to see.
Thank you very much. If you could please resubmit your written testimony to, either directly to me, to my office, or to Vice Chair's office, then we can make sure we've got that record. Thank you.
Great, I'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? If not, questions, members? Representative Ganin?
To the Campaign Spending Commission? Sorry, yeah, every year. Yeah, welcome back. Hey, good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon.
I'm taking a look at the text of HB 1766. On line nineteen, page three, it says a candidate whose appearance, action, or speech is depicted, they bring an action. Can other individuals bring actions for damages, say for example, a political party, a nonprofit, actors, these kinds of, like, individuals? Or is the Campaign Spending Commission happy with the way it is as written?
Well, we, we had some concerns, basically two concerns that we put in our testimony. I don't know if there's any emotion that we've attached to reading the bill, but I think anyone who's, can show that there are damage, and the damage was caused by something that was false, can, can bring all action.
Did you communicate with opposite the Attorney General regarding this bill? Or, yeah, did he, did he communicate with any of the attorneys with the state?
I did not.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, members? No? Representative Kong, are you just being thoughtful or you want to ask question?
That's good.
Okay. Okay. Thanks very much. No further questions, we'll move on. House Bill 1786 relating to elections. It provides protections for clerks, election officials, and election workers from harassment, threats, abuse, and assault in the performance of their official duties. Prohibits the sharing of personal information of clerks, election officials, and election workers for the purposes of harassment, threats, abuse, and assault, and appropriates funds. First up, we have comments from the Attorney General, Deputy Attorney General Mark Tom. Pleasure to see you, sir.
Pleasure. Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Deputy Attorney General Mark Tom for the Department. The Department provides comments and some suggested amendments for House Bill 1786, specifically removal of lines four through nine, page one. That's relating to kind of the assault, harassment, threats section. If the committee intends to maybe add protections for election workers, Department would suggest maybe placing it into 707-711, which is assault in the second degree. It would be very consistent with other classes that have some added protections that the legislature believed were necessary, such as firefighters, educational workers, healthcare workers. So it would be a little more consistent in the HRS. Second would be page, page one, line 11, removal of election commission and replacing it with clerk. Clerk is already defined in the HRS as including county clerks. So whenever there's the election with a county clerk or chief election officers would be the ones that would actually be removing. The Department does not believe that the election commission, commission has that authority, so it would be actually be with the election officer as well as the county clerk. So clerk would be added in there. And also amending page two, line eight, adding clerk as well. That would involve, include the county clerks whenever there's county elections to that election worker definition. We'll be here for any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate your comprehensive testimony. Next, we have testimony in opposition from the Office of the Public Defender, Ben Lowenthal.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, House members. The Office of the Public Defender opposes this bill for the reasons stated in the testimony. We do applaud the intent behind the bill. However, we do take the position that prosecutors have plenty of tools to prosecute those who interfere with our elections, and that this offense would be unnecessary. Should this committee feel that it is necessary, respectfully, we ask that the language, in addition to any other crime, be stricken so that if this charge is brought with other counts, it would be subject to the merger doctrine under 701-109. I am available for any questions that the committee has. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony in opposition from Jamie Detweiler, Hawaii Federation of Republican Women. Please proceed.
Thank you, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Takayama, and committee members. I want to emphasize that I support the intent of HB 1786, but I do oppose the bill, and these are the reasons why. Harassment laws already exist under the Hawaii revised statutes under 711-1106 and various parts of HRS 711. The bill goes on to say that should this pass, that an appropriation of funding would be allocated to the Office of Elections to fund this proposed legislation. And again, I believe this is a waste of taxpayer dollars. Again, I want to emphasize that I am 100% in favor of protecting our public workers, our election workers. Safety and well-being are very important to us at the Federation, but to legislate this when we already have laws on the book and to also write into the bill appropriation of funding, we don't need it. It is a duplication of current laws on the books and duplication of services. For those reasons, I oppose. Please vote no. Thank you for this opportunity to testify. I yield.
Thank you. And we have test, written testimony in opposition from Gary Cordery. Testimony and support from Hawaii Government Employee Association. Testimony in opposition from about fifty people. Testimony and support from a couple, Scott Kidd, Lynn Matasaw, Alika Valdez, Jacob Weincheck. Is there anyone else here wishing to give testimony on this measure? Please, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Chair. I did provide testimony in writing, but I also want to add to the testimony, as those have mentioned already before, this is already covered in legislation and laws or, and laws of civil conduct. Office of Elections has asked for security at certain commission hearings and testimony. It's not something that they don't already have. And I appreciate it because I have testified at some commission hearings where there are some agitators, and I think it helped cut the peace. I would like to note that within this legislation, where are the protections for this legislation, where are the protections for the voters or the citizens? Law enforcement is there for us, too. And there, I raised my concerns with the sheriff when I was there, talking to them, but they're there for the state. They're there for the workers. They're not there for the citizens. I'd like to see that they are there for us, too, and take our concerns and investigate things if there, that warrants it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? If not, questions, members?
Yes, this is Jonah Minkoff-Zern, I'm from Public Citizen.
Please, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. We also are, are working with states around the country to pass this legislation, noting that there are fifteen states that have passed similar bills since 2022, and another twenty that have legislation moving this year. We see the issue of protecting election officials as an essential one right now. Since the 2020 election and election denialism that came from that election, election officials have, or, or from those who denied the results of that election, there's been an increase, a serious increase in threats and harassment to election officials. One in three election officials surveyed in 2022 knew someone who left their job running elections because they didn't feel safe. One in five election officials planned to leave their jobs before 2024. In some states like Arizona, twelve out of the fifteen county chiefs have left their elections, and other states, more than half of the election officials have left their jobs because of threats and harassment they're receiving. And there has been problems prosecuting under current, under current statute in states that haven't passed this legislation. So, we do see it is important in providing those protections, and making sure that election officials who are not, not getting into the job to be public official, public figures, they're getting into the job to make sure our democracy is working, are protected in the face of, of these ongoing threats and harassment that they're receiving.
Thank you very much. If you could submit written testimony, that'd be great.
Sure.
Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? If not, questions, members? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you. Oh, yeah, I will. Good, Vice Chair reminded me that there, there is an appropriation in here, but not, there's a room for appropriations, but we don't, there's no mention of actually how much. I wonder if the Attorney General, who just left, would be able to help us, but he's out of here. No, okay, so, we'll have to, we'll probably just have to, we'll, we'll see what we do in decision-making on that one. But thanks, good question. We're just going to see if the Deputy Attorney General is out there. No, he's gone. Okay. Okay, any other questions? If not, we'll move on. Thanks very much. House Bill 1880, relating to the Electoral College. This reschedules the post-election assembly of presidential electors to the first Tuesday after the second Wednesday in December next following their election. First up, we have testimony from Scott Nago, Office of Elections.
Good afternoon. The Office of Elections provides testimony in support. Congress passed Electoral Count Reform and Presidential Transition Improvement Act of 2022, which changed the date of Electoral College by one day. This law, this would conform our revised statute to conform with that date, and it's simply a housekeeping measure.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify in this measure? If not, questions, members? If not, we'll move on. House Bill 2560, relating to elections. This establishes a rebuttable presumption that a person established a new residence in a place if that person has been absent for a prolonged period of time during which the person has only been in one place. We have testimony in opposition from numerous individuals, forty-eight individuals, one testimony in support, and one comment. Let me check, see if there's anyone here wishing to testify on this measure. Is there anyone here wishing to testify on this measure? Mr. Lamb?
Chair, I think I may have just made a comment, but it's, it's very unclear on what that really means. I understand the intent that if someone, I, there, and I come across people like this. They want to continue to vote in their hometown, but they move into town, and they might have a new residence, or they may move around. And we do need to clean up our voter rolls, and whether they retain their registration over in their hometown or their new residence, I think that's for legislation to clarify. But I'm not sure what this means, and what we're trying to get with this. Thank you.
I, I appreciate your candid review. Any other comments on this measure? Questions, members? If not, let's go on to the last bill on our agenda, House Bill 2612, relating to elections. This abolishes the boards of registration. And on this measure, we have testimony with comments from the Office of the County Clerk, County of Kauai, testimony in opposition from forty-six individuals, and testimony in support from two individuals. Is there anyone here wishing to testify on this, either online or in person? No, if not, questions, members?
I have a question, I have a question for, for Scott Nago. Can you just clarify what the process is for the Board of Registration as far as how they're utilized in the, in the current process?
So, the Board of Registration is the, when, when a voter makes a voter challenge to another voter for not being who they are, or not living where they say they live, that decision is ruled on by the, the county clerk. And it can be appealed to the Board of Registration. Then the Board of Registration would make a ruling, and that can be appealed to the Intermediate Court of Appeals. So, it's just a, a process, an appeals process, an appeals board, I guess.
So, do the, does the Board of Registration, do they actually convene on Election Day, like, physically? Like, is that what the, what the purpose is supposed to be?
So, it used to be, when we were in a polling place model, that the Board of Registration would convene on Election Day. They still do convene on Election Day, but it would be for the purposes of any voter challenge in a polling place to, to hear the appeal of the precinct chairperson.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. I, I guess my concern is, I feel like we need that step in the process, instead of going straight from the clerk to the Intermediate Court of Appeals. However, I noticed that there's a lot of vacancies for the, I guess, within the Board of Registration. So, I guess that's another concern. Do you think that this is just a vacancy problem, where we just can't fill those seats?
I mean, it's really hard to say, because those seats are appointed by the governor with consent of the Senate. So, I, I really don't know what the issue is.
Thank you.
Any other questions, members? I have one question, since we have someone here from the County Clerk's Office for City of Honolulu. If you'd be so kind as to introduce yourself, and if I could ask you a question, your perspective on this measure.
Sure. Glenn Takahashi, I'm the city clerk for the City of Honolulu.
Thank you. And I'm wondering about the Board of Registration in your jurisdiction. Is it active? Is it needed?
My understanding is that there are a couple of vacancies on the board, so they're not duly constituted yet, as of the, as of right now. So, I believe in the last election, there was one appeal from a ruling that we made, but that has gone unresolved since that time.
So, do you just, would you support this legislation, or?
I, I think this is a policy matter on your guys' part, although, although I might add, it, it would seem unusual to go from administrative decision straight to enter, to the Intermediate Court of Appeals. But again, a policy decision on your part.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions, members? If not, thank you very much. Members, let's move directly into decision-making. Back up to the top of the agenda. Thank you to all members who are here, so we can vote. On HB 1593, my recommendation is to pass out an amended bill, HD1. We'll defect the date to the year 3000. And just for people's explanation, we're defecting the effective date because this bill's not finished. And I want to make sure that it doesn't get passed by the House and Senate and go to the governor, because it's not quite finished. So, this is a, a tool we use in order to ensure further dialogue within the legislature. So, we'll defect the date to the year 3000. We will have a blank appropriation in this bill, but we will put in the committee report the request for $552,000. So, we're very transparent about how much money we're asking. It's just not in the bill. And that way, it allows the Finance Committee to be able to consider this measure efficiently. So, that's my recommendation, HD1. Questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 1593 with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Eveslin?
Aye.
Representative Gannon?
Aye.
Representative Holt?
Aye.
Representative Ichiyama, excused.
Thank you.
Representative Iligon?
Aye.
Representative Kong?
Aye.
Representative Miyake?
Aye.
And Representative Souza?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you very much. Next, House Bill 1879. My recommendation is to pass out a House Draft One, so with amendments. We will defect the effective date to year 3000. I would like to exclude, include language in here. After asking the Office of Elections, they very efficiently made a determination that it would not cause any issues for us to make a direct reference on page four, line one of the bill, adding the reference to the Uniform Information Practices Act. And so, I would like to do that. Yes, so we would be exempt from the UIPA. So, I just want to make sure that, that's clear. With that change, that's my recommendation. Any questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote.
Um, I'm sorry, one sec.
This is House Bill 1879 with amendments.
Sorry, Chair. Voting on House Bill 1879 with amendments, noting the presence of Representative Ichiyama. Any members voting with?
Yes, she, yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, noting the presence.
Noting that she's here.
Thank you, Chair. Rep, um, all right. Any members wishing to vote with reservations or nay? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. We're all still getting back into the groove here. Okay, moving on. House Bill 1605. I think this is a, something that we should address, but this bill is not quite on the mark. It needs more work, so I'm recommending we defer this measure and, and work on it some more, because I think the language isn't quite accurate, and it causes confusion. And that's what we're, we're trying to avoid. So, we'll go back and work on that. We're going to defer that measure. House Bill 1606, relating to arrangement of candidate names on ballots. Again, I think this is just confusing matters a little bit more. I appreciate the Office of Elections saying that you can have the ability to, you know, to do some of this, but I, I, at this point, I, I think it needs more work. So, I'm recommending we defer this measure as well, 1606. Moving on to House Bill 1609. I mentioned that when I was in Texas, that I was, you know, I was talking to both House, both Democrat and Republican members, and it was a great debate in Texas at that time, because they were debating whether or not to leave Eric. Subsequently, after that time when I was there, you know, the, the Texas did indeed decide to leave, but when I was there, it was, I was right in the middle of the debate. And the folks I was talking to in the Elections Office were saying that Eric was really a good idea, and it really worked well. And they thought it was very beneficial, despite the criticisms they were hearing from others within their community. So, I recognize it's a debate. It's controversial. I recommend that we do move forward with this, because I do think that, on balance, it will be useful. So, I recommend to the committee that we move out a House Draft One with a defective date in the year 3000. I'd like to adopt the Office of Elections amendments. Blank out the appropriation, but put in the committee report $125,000 for fiscal year 24. Include that it would be joined, as you've mentioned, as the Office of Elections mentioned, June 30th, 2025. I'd also like to codify Section Two and Section Five, because these will be ongoing requirements, and some other technical amendments. So, that's my recommendation. Pass out HB 1609 with amendments. Questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 1609. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Any members voting with, with reservations or nay? Representative Kong, with reservations? Chair, your recommendation's adopted.
Thank you. Next, House Bill 1976, relating to the Office of Elections. My recommendation is to move this bill out with an amendment, so it'd be HD1. Defect the effective date to year 3000. Blank out the appropriations, but include the recommendation of $10,000 in the committee report. I'd like to codify Section Four in the bill, because I think that is an ongoing requirement, and make some other technical amendments. So, that's my recommendation, HB 1976. Pass out with amendments. Questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote. 1976.
Sorry. Voting on House Bill 1976 with amendments. Any members voting with reservations or no? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Next, House Bill 1678, relating to elections and the UH system. Frankly, I think that it's already, UH is already doing quite a bit of this, and so I, I would recommend we defer this. If there's an interest in doing the studies and data collection that is mentioned here, I think we could do that through a resolution and not through a bill. So, my recommendation on this measure is to defer it for those reasons. Next, House Bill 1766. I think this is an emerging and, and really challenging issue that we should work to address. This is a good first step. It's not complete, so my recommendation is to pass it out with the House Draft One. Defect the effective date to year 3000. I'd like to adopt the Campaign Spending Commission, Commission's amendments, and also the amendments from the Motion Picture Association. I thought they were very useful. And then, also, I want to make some technical amendments as well, to include in here, as recommended by our, our House Majority Staff Office. And so, we would, I, I want to pay attention to where we have the words "party" in addition to "candidate," and keep that in mind as we, as we make these amendments. So, those are my recommendations. House Bill 1766, pass with amendments. Questions or concerns, members? Representative Gannon?
Chair, thank you so much for hearing this. It's a disturbing, emerging, global trend. I have some concerns about who a potential plaintiff is in a lawsuit. My thought is that, you know, ordinarily, an individual who can bring a suit is an individual who is injured. I think in this case, the, I guess the community at large is injured. So, I think the state should be able to bring a suit. I'm thinking about a long history of environmental rights legislation and litigation in which we've expanded who can sue and, and be considered a plaintiff. Also, the way it's written now, a candidate whose appearance, I, I mean, so this might cover, say, a presidential candidate, but say, someone at our level, at the representative level, or the council level, they might not want to bring a suit because of the cost, you know, and they don't want to hire and retain counsel to sue a major communications organ, corporation, you know, that it's going to be wildly expensive. So, for those reasons, I'd like to expand who can be considered a plaintiff under Section E. Thank you.
I'm open to a friendly amendment. Are, do you have suggested language you want to add in a certain place?
Yes, I, I would suggest, maybe I could think about it just a bit better with a brief consultation with opposite Attorney General. Section E, in, in addition to a candidate whose appearance, I would, I would also like to say a party, or some sort of, or the state. or some sort of, or the state. Or, I know I'm looking at you for like a brief legal discussion.
No, this one, this one's, so maybe what I'll do is maybe we can defer this to a hearing next week, and you can work on it and let us know what your suggestions are.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, so let's do that. We're going to defer this to, let's defer this to Wednesday next week, and we'll put it on the agenda there for decision-making, and if I can hear from you before then, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Yes, so it'd be Wednesday, February 7. We'll defer to this measure till Wednesday, February 7, with the intention of moving it out with a House Draft 1 with some additional language that Representative Ganaden is going to work on. Okay, so let's do that. Next, we have House Bill 1786 relating to elections. This one, I'd like to move out a House Draft 1. This is an important measure. I think it's happening way too frequently, and it's a disturbing trend, and I'd like to protect our officials who are working in the elections. I would like to recommend we move out an amended version, HD1, defect the effective date to 3000, blank out the appropriations, which are already blanked, but I don't know how much we're going to ask for. I'll have to follow up on that before it goes to finance. I need to make some technical amendments. I would like to adopt the recommended amendments from the public defender and also from the Attorney General. And if any, any questions or concerns, comments? If not, Vice Chair for the vote, passing out House Bill 1786 with amendments.
Voting on House Bill 1786 with amendments. Chair's recommendation, I'm sorry. Any members wishing to vote with reservations or no? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next is House Bill 1880, rescheduling the post-election assembly of presidential electors. This is a very straightforward bill, non-controversial. I'd like to pass it out as is. Questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 1880, passing as is. Any members voting with reservations or no? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next, House Bill 2560. This needs more work. It's confusing, and I appreciate your comments, Mr. Lamb. Good intention, but it just doesn't hit the mark. So I'm recommending we defer this and send it back to the introducer to do more work on it. Okay, House Bill 2612. You know, I think this bill has merit, but I would like to hear from the other, I would like to hear from the other clerks in the other counties. You know, we only had one testimony from one county clerk. I did hear from our clerk from this county, but they were rather deferential to make us make the decision. So I need to gather more information. So I'm going to, I recommend we defer this measure and gather more information from the other county clerks to see if, what's the best way to proceed. I don't have a date certain on this, so I'm recommending we defer it, and if we want to bring it back, I'll have to put it back on a future agenda. That being all of our business today, there's no more business before it for us. This meeting is now adjourned.